Welcome to our candidate forums today here at 91.3 Hope FM. These are the candidates for Putnam County Board of County Commission and District Four, Larry Harvey and Tom Williams. Only registered Republicans will be voting for this race in August, and the winner will face two other candidates in November. One is an NPA and one is a write-in. Rather than have our forums on the radio, we're offering it on video so that voters can watch at their leisure, either on our website or social media channels, or on Gospel Vision TV. The candidates have been furnished with a list of questions ahead of time, and this is not a debate, but rather each one will be asked a question and have one minute to respond. And to be fair, we're going to take turns as to who answers each question first, and we do have a one-minute limit for your answer. So we'll have a timer that'll go off at the 60-second mark and give you the opportunity to wrap up your answer. The entire forum shouldn't last more than 30 minutes, and we appreciate you watching to help make an informed decision before you go to the polls. Both Hope FM and Gospel Vision are nonprofit ministries, and we provide these candidate forums as a community service, and we just want to help voters make an informed decision. We do not accept any political advertising. We don't endorse any candidates or parties, and so we feel like we can be impartial. Now that you know all of that, let's get started with meeting our candidates. We're going to start with Larry Harvey, as he is the incumbent in the position. So for our first question, you get one minute to tell us about yourself and why you want to continue to serve as a Putnam County Commissioner.
Well, thank you, Robin, and good morning to all the watchers and listeners out there in radio land and TV land. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's an honor and very humbling to serve in this position that I do. My name is Larry Harvey. I've been married to my wife Linda for over 38 years. We live in Interlaken, and we have three daughters, five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. I had a successful business out there and sold it to one of my employees who worked for me, and now her and her partner have really taken off and done tremendously good job. I was appointed by Governor Scott in March of 2014 and elected twice, and it was one of the highlights of my life. I showed up for work the day I got appointed, and I haven't stopped working since that time to make Putnam County better and to promote Putnam County, not only through our county, but through our state and through our nation. So, thank you.
And Mr. Williams, same question. Tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be a county commissioner.
I retired from Metro Days, the police department, in 1998, moved up here in Putnam County in 1998, opened a small business in Interlaken also. I've had it for the last 25 years. It's been very successful. I'm a husband of 30-plus years, a father of 50-plus years, with three sons and one daughter. Have four granddaughters, one great-granddaughter. Very much interested and active in our community. I sponsored three Habitat for Humanity homes, helped build six of them. One of them went to one of our really, a real war hero with two Purple Hearts and a Medal of Valor. Very active. I want to, you know, I think I can bring some change to the county that, I think some of the compasses have gotten a little foggy, and I just want to put us in the right path. And, you know, nothing against my opponent here, but, you know, I think it's time for a change, and I think I can bring the change to Putnam County.
Okay. Thank you so much. For the next question, Tom, we'll start with you. What experience do you have that you feel qualifies you to fulfill the duties of this office?
The office is actually, the duties of this office is actually not much more than running a business. The county is a business, and the commission is the head of the business, per se. I've had over 45 years managing, running, operating, owning businesses of my own. I've had to make sound decisions, and I have a pretty fantastic, at least I think I do over the years, because I don't have any complaints. I have a good ability to talk with people and to deal with people and their different problems, and I think that's an aspect that the county commission could use as an asset for them.
Thank you. And Larry Harvey, same question. What experience do you have that you feel qualifies you to fulfill this role?
Robin, I'm currently doing this job, and I have been for many years now. Again, I was appointed by Governor Scott, and I haven't stopped working for the people of Putnam County since then. I have over 200 hours of county commission school and mentoring that I do, and I mentor commissioners throughout the state of Florida. There's nothing new that we do here. It's just a different perspective, and if you can gain the listening knowledge to go around and hear from your fellow commissioners throughout the state of what's going on, you can bring back those little nuggets that can help Putnam County, and that's what I've been able to do, listening to our staff, trusting our staff, putting the right people in office in the places that they need to be. We have accomplished a lot in a few years, and I'm looking forward to more and more accomplishments coming into the future.
And that leads into my next question. Do you feel that you've made improvements to the county by your participation on the board so far?
You know, Robin, I know I have. I can feel that we, back in 2014, our budget was very minimal. Our reserves were going downhill. Our millage rates were up. Things weren't looking good, and Governor Scott asked me to make a change on that, and we really did make a change, and we worked very hard to get our reserves up to where they are today, our millage rate going down. Property values were stagnant back then. They're going up now. Developers, we're not looking at us. They're looking at us now. Things are happening here in Putnam County, and we have made a change. One of the proudest things I think we've done is percentage budgeting for our constitutional officers. They love it. It's working well for them. Actually, when they came this year to present their budget, they got more, most of them, I think all but one got more than they were requesting. So, we looked at that, because their budgets were staying about the same, and the concept is, as Putnam County grows, they grow too at the same time. They don't have to come with their hat in their hand, and we need to support our constitutional officers, especially our law enforcement. Thank you.
And Mr. Williams, how do you feel that you would make improvements to our county by serving on the county commission?
I think I can make the best improvements with this county by involving the people of the county, and I think it'll come in farther down on one of the other questions. A lot of the people in this county just feel like they're un... I guess the word we're trying to use is they just feel like they're left out, they're not involved. They have their meetings at time when most people are at work, just like you all are up here right now at work. You couldn't make a county commission meeting if you needed to most of the time. So I think listening and responding to the people is the biggest thing. There's a lot of things that have happened. We're at our highest budget in the county so far. I think it's $221 million. And if you ask the people out there a question, most of them would like to answer is, what has it really done for them? We don't have much better infrastructure. We don't have, our roads are not done. And the biggest thing is, people just don't feel like they're listened to or responded to in the county.
Thank you. And if you are elected, what would be your top priorities as a commissioner, Mr. Williams?
Sensible growth. You know, we obviously know that we need to increase our tax base, not raise taxes, but we need some sensible growth. As everybody's going to tell you, we move up here because we like the rural living to a point, but unfortunately, things have to happen, and people, you know, we need growth. I want to change the perception, which I just talked about in the other question, of the people of the county. Perception sometimes to most people is reality, and they just feel that they're not, they're unimportant, or they've been left out, so I want to change that perception of the county. And I want to give true transparency to the citizens.
Thank you. And Mr. Harvey, if you're re-elected, what would your top priorities be?
Well, thank you, Robin. I think protecting, well, I know protecting our rural nature and our history is very important to Putnam County. The expansion of our port, that's a very exciting process that's going on right now. The Ports Council is going to be, Governor DeSantis signed us into a Ports Council, so we can be looking at how we can expand our port, streamlining the permit process. We're currently doing that right now. We need more workers in that department to get our permits out, because we've taken on work for the municipalities, and it's really kind of slowed us down a little bit, so we're looking at that. And supporting law enforcement, our first responders, you know, by allowing the sheriff and our public safety director to do their job and to get the budget that they're asking for, and I vote for that, other than, some people don't, but I think it's very important to support law enforcement, our first responders. So those would be my priorities.
Well, roads are always a big concern with people in our community, not only paving dirt roads, but the condition of them, the safety. What are your thoughts, Mr. Harvey, on improving them to keep up with the needs of our community?
You know, Robin, past few years, we've sunk more money into roads than we ever have as a commission. Problem is, right now, we have a supply chain issue, and getting asphalt is one of our biggest problems. We've got roads out there right now with tar on them, waiting for asphalt, and we can't get it. The contractor says it might be October before we ever see it. Now the roads will have to be reworked by that contractor. The MSBUs are working very well in our area. We finally trued those up a little bit. Those are municipal service benefit units, and we try to rectify a standard, a minimum standard for those. Some of them didn't have standards. Some of the citizens committee were not doing what the taxpayers needed them to do. So we've put a little teeth into that, cleaned that up, and hopefully that'll move forward. But infrastructure is very failing in Putnam County, and we need to approach it with more grants, more partners, and we've done that. Just recently, we got, I went up to Tallahassee and lobbied for $2 million for County Road 310 Bridge, and we received that.
And Mr. Williams, your thoughts on the roads in our community and how to keep up with the needs?
Well, if you remember back, I think it was about 15, 16 years ago now, they implemented a Better Place Plan, and the people voted on it. At that particular time, the Better Place Plan was mostly designed to better our roads and some of our infrastructure and sidewalks and so forth. We also had an oversight committee that could make sure that that's where the money was supposed to be spent, as that's where they had asked the taxpayers to vote for it so they could have it. The second time around, it was passed on an off-election year. They removed the oversight committee, and now the Better Place Plan money seems to be used for just about anything whatsoever, and some of the stuff that we've had to use it on, we needed to use it on. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's $850,000 a year of it that goes toward the new jail, and obviously, we needed a new jail. But the money needs to go, that plan needs to be put back to what it originally was designed for. Mr. Harvey is correct in one respect, because I deal with a lot of companies, and the asphalt problem right now is because our federal administration has said that they can't dig, they can't mine for the particular type of rock and stuff that's needed for the asphalt, so it is a supply chain right now.
All right. And kind of along the same lines, Mr. Williams, do you think that our current infrastructure is adequate for where we are now and for potential growth? And if not, how can we improve?
Well, absolutely not. Our infrastructure right now is just a total disaster. You know, we can't expect companies and development to come when they have to spend larger amounts of money, like for a septic system, water wells, pull the power lines in, pull the cable lines in. So yes, we definitely need to work on our infrastructure. And I think the biggest thing is, and it was stated earlier, we can get grants. We need to change the way that we do our zoning and our permitting. Some people, even with small projects right now, they just say they go through hoop after hoop trying to get their permits to build. So we can't expect anybody else to come in here when we have nothing to offer them. Even a restaurant, if they wanted to build a restaurant somewhere, they have to do grease traps and so forth, just to be able to cook. So you're not going to get it out of that. So, we have the broadband, our roads, it just all falls back on our poor infrastructure.
And Mr. Harvey, same question for you about infrastructure.
You know, Robin, there's always areas to improve on with infrastructure, and it's a nationwide problem. We have aging infrastructure, but we're working on that. We're working very diligently on getting those done, and roads are part of economic development. Make no mistake about that, and they really do help our county. You know, our bridges, our ports, our broadband, as you know, I'm the president, I'm the president of the Committee on Broadband for the Association of Counties, and working very diligently with the industry to bring better broadband to Florida, to Putnam County. And I do have a plan. I will say that. I went yesterday and had a serious meeting with our planning department about how we can move some of these things forward when that time comes. But, you know, we're getting there. And again, if we had, if we had all the money right now that we had, we still could not pave roads and do things that we want. And we do have a citizens committee that still overlooks the Better Place Plan, and they do that. Thank you.
Our next question will go to Larry Harvey to start with. While we are seeing a lot of growth with people moving here all the time, we really don't have enough affordable, adequate housing, and how can we improve this?
You know, Robin, that's not only a county problem, that's a regional problem, and I'm the president of the Regional Council in Jacksonville, and right now, even we're talking about available housing, if there's anything available. Prices have soared for minor homes, if you will. So government has a role to play in that. We're not going to go out and build houses for people. That's not our job to do that. The private market's job is to do that. But I think we can start using more of our shit monies, and we have talked about that, to help with down payment assistance for people that can get into homes. But even if they could right now, you're looking at home prices on some old mobile homes in the 70s and the $120,000 mark. Who can afford that kind of price starting out? So it's not an adequate housing situation, and building substandard homes or building homes that government might fund, I just don't believe that's the answer. I think the private market will bounce back. There'll be a bubble burst very soon, and then I think people can get into homes that are affordable at that time.
And Mr. Williams, your thoughts on housing?
Well, I think this falls right back a little bit on the infrastructure question we had earlier. First of all, we need to get our infrastructure on the way to help reduce some of the cost to build, you know, septic versus a sewage system. It takes a few hundred dollars to hook up to a sewage system. It takes thousands of dollars to build a septic system. Same thing with water. If we had water treatment plants and spread out throughout the county, and, you know, it's $3,000 or $4,000 to sink a well in most places in the county versus a few hundred dollars to hook up to a water supply line. So it basically falls back, we just don't have anything to even offer or bring forward to builders. I know a while back, there was a builder that wanted to come in, and because of so much infrastructure lack or lack thereof, they withdrew their plans. So, affordable housing, right now with the way the market is, it's going to be tough for anybody to build a house, and in this county here, we just don't have any, as alluded... My minute goes fast.
It does. Mr. Williams, another area of concern is Putnam County animal control. They are often overcapacity and really in desperate need of a better facility. How would you plan to address this?
Well, from what I understand, there'd been a plan and a budget for this, for to rebuild a new kennel or... Boy, I lost the word. They've had us planned for a long time to rebuild, to build a new...
Facility?
Facility. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
But for some reason, staff or, nobody can seem to get it going. They just keep kicking the can down the road. They had a budget, I think, of $750,000, which is probably going to be impossible to do it now with the price of construction material and the lack thereof, construction material. So I think what we need to do is just quit kicking the can, act, and get it done. We've set up the plan for it. We just, I don't know why we keep kicking the can. People are waiting for it. People are ready to go for it.
Thank you. And Mr. Harvey, same question?
Thank you, Robin. You know, we got in trouble years ago when we didn't put it out. The audit showed that we built things and we didn't have citizens committee. We have a citizens committee that actually found land. We got the land now behind the sheriff's department. Sheriff is working very diligently on this animal shelter with his inmates to work very closely. We commissioned Commissioner Rawls a few years ago to start the process of, he volunteered to start looking at a building and looking at what we needed and also what the Animal Services Committee wanted, and the staff, and that has worked out very well. It's out on the street right now through procurement, and we are in design-build. That's something Commissioner Rawls has been wanting to do since the day he got there, design-build, and we're in that right now. Now, that might present challenges to us. We might not be able to build a 5,000-square-foot building, might be a 2,500-square-foot building, but anything is better than what they've got. And believe me, the kennels are my first priority, to get those done, because our animals deserve that area. And then people can come out to a nice facility and adopt dogs and cats. Thank you.
Well, another topic is one that's been talked a lot about, and that it's very difficult for people to find help when they're in crisis in the areas of substance abuse, mental health issues, homelessness, just to name a few. So what could we do here in our county so that we can get help for those that need it in a timely manner without having to refer them out of county or even out of state?
You know, the stigma of that is that it's an addiction, that's a disease for a lot of people. Some people think it's a choice, but it's not. Some people get caught up in drugs, and they don't really mean to do that. So we do have local facilities, but we also hear that our local people don't want to go to local facilities. They want to be taken out of their environment to other places where they don't have that pull on them from evil, if you will. We have great programs in the jail. Jeremy's doing a great job over there. Stuart Marchmanak's doing a wonderful job. So I think we're doing the thing that we can possibly do right now as far as mental health. I think we can always do more. We can always do better. But churches and faith-based community can take a big part in that, too. And with the homelessness, that we're going to see more and more of that with this housing bubble going to take place. We're going to see more and more people living in the woods, living in tents, and they're going to be homeless, and we need to be able to be prepared for that. And government has a role, but I just don't know that big of a role it would be when the churches and all, we can all step up and help out.
And Mr. Williams, same question.
Well, there are private foundations, there's government programs. I think we just need to explore, research, and ask, and then act. I think we need to be more proactive. We seem to be more reactive in this county on a lot of the projects that we do than proactive, and when you react, it always seems to cost more time and more money. So, I think there's projects out there for it, and I know there's a few facilities and stuff within the county itself. I know we have a health department also. One thing you'll find out about me, I'm not a fantastic speaker like my opponent over here who's had years and years to do it, and I applaud him for that. He's very good at what he does. My thing is, I just work hard. I will do it. I will find out what we can do for it, but I know there's foundations out there, and I think there's a few of them that are trying to come in here in the county now. And again, I think we need to get back to our family values and our Christian values and help people.
And if you are elected, what would you do to move the county forward to be on better financial footing?
Falls back to one of the earlier questions, and again, is promote sensible growth, both commercial and residential. Try to find a way to get a better workforce or to draw people in here to work, and right now, that seems to be a nationwide problem. It's, I'm never in my life, you know, I'm not, I'm sure I'm the oldest person in this room, and I've never in my life seen as many help-wanted signs out there as there are, and then I've never seen as many people that are unemployed. I don't know if it's by choice or our problem that we had with the educational system where we neglected to teach trades. We told everybody they had to go to college and get some type of a degree, and we forgot about our trades. And even with what my opponent was doing years and years ago, there's not even very many people that want to sell insurance. I mean, it's just, we need to get back to training people, and once we get people trained, we get people working, you increase your tax base because they're going to spend money, they're going to buy homes, and, you know, we'll get it that way, but sensible growth, I think, is the question, is the answer.
And if you're re-elected, what would you do to move the county forward to be on better financial footing?
You know, Robin, we are on good financial footing right now. We have really grown our county. I know the budget you heard was $212 million, but really technically, $45 million is avalorm taxes that come in, and about 65% of that goes out to the constitutional officers. All the rest of that is just in-and-out grants and things in that nature, so a lot of it is out of our control. But we have seen lowering millage rates. We've seen truing up of the MSBUs. We've seen, we have challenges placed on us by the voters with the Minimum Wage Act, and that's going to be bringing a lot of salaries up, hopefully in the county, very, very soon. We tried to take the big bite of the apple now. We just are not able to do that and keep our taxes low. So, we are moving in the right direction, but promoting Putnam County is the main thing that we need to be looking at, and our top 10 taxpayers are still, years ago, are still the same ones today. So we need to be diverse in that area and try to bring that business and personal growth back in.
As Christian ministries, of course, one of the questions that we always like to ask is, how would your faith play a role in your service as a county commissioner?
Well, Robin, I don't think you can do this job without being a Christian and being faithful to the Lord. This is a calling. I was called to do this, and I'm going to continue till the day God calls me not to do it. I get in my office every morning, I get on my knees, and I pray. I pray for every county commission. I pray for our staff. I pray for the audience that's going to come that day. It's important to seek wisdom in doing this job, because truly, there's something new that comes to us every day that we've never heard about, and sometimes you're very, you want to be proactive, but you're reactive to that situation. And if we stop for a moment, seek wisdom from the Lord, then we can move this county in the proper direction, and that's what I do every day. So my faith is, my faith is what I live for. It's how I get up every morning, and it's what I do for the people of Putnam County, and it's how I work for you. Thank you.
And Tom Williams, same question. What role might your faith play in your service as a county commissioner?
Well, with many years of law enforcement experience, I've had to make life-altering decisions in a split second, on a second's notice, and I think my moral, my faith, family values have allowed me to do this and make these decisions without regret. So, the Christian, I just think we need to come back to, as I stated earlier, our moral and family values and our Christian values, I think is the only thing that really plays a good role in our life, and like I said, I've made decisions that most people don't have to make, and with my values and my faith, I don't regret any decision I've ever made.
Thank you. And are there any other areas that you feel we haven't yet covered that you'd like to mention?
The one thing that I think we've left off a little bit here, and it's, somewhere along the line, we need to do something for our youth in this county. We have no meeting place, per se, that they can go and have, you know, just be young people. Hogwiler was built out there in the west end of the county, and people love it out there on the weekends and stuff, but, you know, it costs some people money, and some people don't have it, and some people are not into that. But we just have not developed, that I know of, a place for our youth. I know the sheriff's department has Athletic League with the boxing. There's things out there, but it's just, we don't have a place for just the normal, everyday young person to go and have a good time without supposedly someone calling, cut the music down, or too many cars parked in the neighborhood, or something like that. So I think we need to develop something for our youth to try to keep them here in Putnam County. And along with that, with our commercials and our growth, I hope that somewhere along the line that we can do something to keep our kids here as they grow older. They all seem to go out of county to work.
And Larry Harvey, same question. Any other areas of concern you think we should have covered?
You know, we've been found, and I'll say that. Putnam County has been found. We're the hub of many counties, and people are now looking at us and moving in here at a high rate of speed. Development's taking place, but we need to keep our natural way of life and our history right very close to us. Our moral values are still important to Putnam County. We're the most-giving county I've ever been in in my life, but I've only lived here, so I don't, but when people from surrounding counties hear that, they go, wow, y'all really do a lot for everybody, and we do. There's not a cause that none of us in this room don't jump on when we find that there's a need for something. So, it's exciting for me to see that part of Putnam County growing. We need our land development code and our comp plan to be firmed up and be in sync with each other. We're working on that very diligently, and we need to make a plan to move Putnam County forward, and we are working on that right now in the county commission. Thank you.
And one final question. We'll give you one minute to tell us why people should vote for you.
Well, I think it's pretty simple. I work for you. My filter is one thing or two things. One is God, and one is the single mother with two children. My mother passed away when I was, when she was 32 years of age, and when I got here and I could receive that call to serve, I always felt like if I could help the woman who was a single parent with two small children going to school, if I can make her life better, then everybody else's life gets better. And that's what I've always filtered myself through. What would God want me to do, and what would my mom want me to do to make people's lives better? I know that sounds kind of cliche, but it really is important to me that that takes place. So, I think I'm the best candidate. I've been there doing the work. I've been working for the people of Putnam County, and I'm going to continue. I've got a lot of energy. I'm passionate, and I'm excited about this, and I wake up every day... every day wanting to do what's best for Putnam County, and I go to bed every night hoping I did something good for that, for people in that day. So, if you will vote for Larry Harvey for county commissioner, on or before August 23rd.
Thank you so much. And Tom Williams, why should people vote for you?
Well, as I've stated on my cards and my slogan is, it's time. And I understand where my opponent is coming from here, but when you're out here in the public, and I'm in it all day long, and I've done nothing my entire life but work with the public and running different businesses, and their perception right now is that this county government just doesn't care about them. And like I said, most of the time, perception is reality. My plan is to change that, respond to the people, listen to the people. We can talk all day long about our faith this and our faith that. As I stated earlier, I've made decisions in my life that most people don't have to make, and I don't regret them, and it is because of the faith and my beliefs. But my, voting for me will give you a voice in the county commission, and it will be there all the time, not just, you know, I don't want to get into a debate, because I really have known Larry for years and years and years, and I respect him. But it's time for a change, that people want to know that they're going to be listened to.
Thank you so much, and thank you for watching today. Both of these candidates are on the primary ballot, and Election Day is August 23rd. Want to encourage you to visit the Supervisor of Elections website, and you can see sample ballots, you can confirm your polling place, you can find out about early voting, all that information and more is there. Also, want to encourage you to like and follow Hope FM online, and that way you can see other candidate forums as we complete them and post them as well. Also, watch them on our partner Gospel Vision TV. And for Gospel Vision and Hope FM, I'm Robin Robinson, encouraging you to exercise your right to vote. Thank you for watching, and God bless you.